Okay, so it's six o'clock.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, all right, well, it's six o'clock and we do have a forum now. And tonight, we have an important topic. We're going to go over the 2021 legislative review. And I think we have Doug Levy here to tell us how things went in Olympia.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. Pleasure to be in front of you this evening. And I'm going to go through a PowerPoint on the 2021 session. I think overall, I would say a very good session. If if things were to happen in terms of transportation over the next several months, it could go to a terrific session. We'll see about that, and I'll give you a bit of background. So sharing my screen here. Can you all see that okay?
Yeah, yes, it looks good, Doug. You're not in presentation mode. There you are.
About that, okay, great. So in terms of the 2021 session, just to give you a little bit of context, I don't think we've ever seen one like it. And I'm not sure we'll ever see one like it again, frankly. So remember that, just as you all, as a council, have been dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic and what that's meant to function, so too did 147 legislators. And, you know, they went from in-person to virtual. And that really changed the whole nature of the session. In one sense, they were in a bubble, and they might not have seemed as approachable. In another sense, as I think some of you found out when you testified, there have never been more people testifying at public hearings and signing up for public hearings than there were this session. So just a very different feel to the 2021 session. Remember that we had, in the middle of 2020, a sense that the legislature might be dealing with several billion dollars' worth of shortfall in their operating budget, and we were planning accordingly. And as we nudge several rounds of COVID relief funding ending with the American Rescue Plan Act, really infused a lot of money into the state treasury and combined with an economy that picked up, helped keep the session from being one with deep cuts to being a much more manageable one. So whatever else you want to say about this legislature, I think you could call them an activist legislature. And I listed some of the things that happened during this 2021 session. Major bills on carbon reduction. A capital gains tax was approved. It's likely going to face a legal challenge. A whole series of policing reform measures passed. We'll talk about that. For the first time since enacting a working families tax exemption program in 2008, the legislature funded it. A whole new response to how we're going to, as a state of Washington, deal with drug possession, what's called the Blake case. And I'll talk a bit more about that. Enormous amount of investment in affordable housing and emergency rental assistance. And a really positive, robust capital budget adopted. And then a few key economic development bills approved that I'll talk about. So in terms of a global view around cities and local governments, I think a very positive session that way. First of all, you know, we always want to make sure that the key budgets protect us and don't diminish the revenues we see coming from the state of Washington. This budget did that and protected what we call the state share revenues around liquor revenue, marijuana revenue, criminal justice assistance. It actually also bumped up the amount of marijuana distribution excise tax that went to cities and counties from $30 million of IANM to $40. And then fully funding the Basic Law Enforcement Academy at 15 classes a year. And it's something that had never happened before in all my time patrolling the hallways of Olympia. A $20 million account in the operating budget to help cities offset costs anticipated with 2020 and 2021 legislation around law enforcement and criminal justice. And then, obviously, revenue relief, both in the $20 million I talked about at the federal level and then with a bill, House Bill 1069, that will allow you more choices about how you manage existing revenue sources, particularly things like real estate excise tax. Policing reform bills, we worked on that actively. We found that most, if not all, of the bills were pretty workable. I'll name a couple we had concerns with. As I said, significant progress on affordable housing and rental assistance and the capital budget, and I'll go into those, vis-à-vis our priorities. You always come out of a session with not everything being roses, but a few potential concerns and thorns, right? So we had hoped for a new transportation revenue package. That hasn't happened yet. There's still a possibility of a special session. There's also a possibility that the legislature kicks the can on this all the way till 2023, and I'll explain further. This case on Blake and the fix the legislature did to put much more of an onus around services and treatment and forensic navigators for folks. That's a new experiment for the state of Washington, and we have to see how it works out and how it'll be funded and what it what it looks like for those of us that run municipal courts. Once again, the legislature showed very little desire to address the 1% property tax limit that you all live with. You're, you know, all the way back to Initiative 747, your revenues only go up 1% per year maximum, other than new construction. We all know your costs tend to go up more than that. A lot of Growth Management Act bills did not make the cut. A couple did, but for the most part, the legislature sidestepped doing major reform on the Growth Management Act. And then I linked for you, if you wanted to get a look at the Association of Washington Cities and some of their pro con on the session, you can use that link to get there. So let's go into, you know, a very specific look at Renton and our agenda that you all were a part of developing and approving. First of all, we always have a quality of life section to the agenda, and that came out very well for us. We asked for $1 million for connected bike lanes up on 168th Street Southeast in the Cascade Benson Hill neighborhood. We didn't get all 1 million, but we got a nice down payment on that, a $500,000 allocation in the capital budget. We also asked for just under 1.4 million to continue the safety and environmental improvements at North Coulon for the walkway path where the Kid Valley and Ivors are right now. And the legislature fully funded that in the capital budget, 1.339 million. We also wanted to make sure that a little over $3 million in what's called the Building Communities Fund was in the capital budget for a combined Health Point and Renton application. It was indeed. And there was even a little bit of additional money for Health Point for dental care up at Family First Community Center. All in all, if you count a Renton Technical College allocation, about $9 million in earmarks just back into the Renton community. So good stuff. And several other grant programs and funding buckets that I'll talk about a bit more. We also, if you'll remember, I think, just given all of the issues that we've been working with and all of the issues on a national scale, the mayor had wanted to make sure that we were spending significant time and focus on racial justice and equity and inclusion. And we were involved in a number of efforts there around emergency rental assistance, minority and women-owned contracting opportunities have been passed by Representative Santos, House Bill 1259. We were very supportive of a Representative Orwell bill to authorize and fund a new 988 Crisis and Mental Health Response Hotline. And we had been very supportive back in 2020 of establishing and funding an office of equity within the governor's office because of all the pre-pandemic vetoing the governor did back in 2020. That 2.6 million was vetoed. This time, it was included in the budget. It's there. It's going to happen. And then transportation infrastructure, I'll talk about why I think there's a combination of wins and still to be determined. So if you look at the transportation projects that we wanted to make a push for, one of them that we've been working on for a number of years is at 405 and North Eighth, where, as you well know, that currently stops at Hauser Way. And we've been, all the way back to the Sound Transit days, wanting to make sure there was a direct access ramp and connection. That was in both the Senate and House spending plan, so that's very good news. It was fully funded in the Senate spending plan. We also, you know, made a hard push around 405 and 167 area improvements and over crossing of Grady Way at Rainier Avenue. That was in the House spending plan. And we worked directly with Representative Hackney in particular on that one. And then we, you know, we made a pitch for further extending of the East Rail Corridor. And of course, our council president's on an advisory committee that works on that issue. And we were one of about four projects up and down the corridor looking for state funding. The $6 million we asked for was in both the Senate and House spending plans. Now, there's good news in that we made it into these spending plans. The not-so-good news is that without a revenue package, these things don't come to fruition. So they're on a list, but they're not there yet unless a package comes to pass. One thing that was in the budget, in the final transportation budget, that we will have in hand, and we just got our grant award letter late last week. The legislature put a little bit of extra money into the Regional Mobility Grant Program. We had applied for money for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor improvements and business access transit lanes, or what we call BAT lanes. And we were just below the funding line. But some of the senators who worked in particular on the budget, like Senator Saldana from our area, were able to put a little bit of extra money into the Regional Mobility Grant Program. Three additional city projects got funded. We were one of them, and so we will realize an additional $2 million for Rainier, which is great. On the fiscal side, some of the wins for us, again, I talked about revenue relief. First off, there's the federal money that's coming from the American Rescue Plan Act. Our number's going to be about $18.1 million. And obviously, we'll get into a whole, you know, work effort about where we best put that money, and that'll obviously flow through you all. And so the mayor and Ed Van Bailey and Carrie Roller are hard at work on putting together some preliminary plans for your review. State revenue relief, I talked about the $20 million account that's there. All of the existing resources were protected. Some additional fiscal flexibility in the form of House Bill 1069. So check the box on all those things. Public safety, we wanted to be very supportive of most of the bills around policing reforms. We felt going in, and we talked about with you all, that so much of what we're doing in Renton already is a model of how to run a compassionate law enforcement agency. And so we were supportive of most of those. I'll go through them in just a second here. And I mentioned that a traditional staple of ours is to make sure there's adequate funding in the Basic Law Enforcement Academy for new hires and the classes to train them. The Senate budget that was passed had only 12 classes per year. The House budget had 15, and the final budget held that 15 number. And we worked with many others to help ensure that. Some other key things for Renton that came out of the session that I'll note. We've always been a strong proponent of tax increment financing. The legislature's really never passed a full TIF program, as we call it. They did this year. They passed House Bill 1189. Now, it's a little different than what has been worked on in the past, where it doesn't involve a component of state revenue, but it does allow for local increments of property tax and is something we think we can definitely use in areas like the, you know, the potential transit-oriented development area we're studying. Also, a significant expansion of the Main Street program. We've been taking a look at whether this is the time to have a formal Main Street program in Renton. Given the expansion of the program, it's well worth looking at now, especially. The legislature had a long, drawn-out negotiation about what to do with what's called the MFT or multifamily property tax exemption program. We felt good about the way Senate Bill 5287 came out. It enables you all to have the discretion over using both the eight-year program that you can award for market rate housing or the 12-year program for affordable units or even a 20-year version. So Senate Bill 5287 turned out well. Senate Bill 5368 is a good little Growth Management Act bill on making the annexation process even a little more streamlined, where there are areas where cities and counties are in full agreement and can develop an ILA between them. Senate Bill 5368 expedites the process. And another bill that passed on the economic development side, remember, I mentioned there were a few, House Bill 1386, called the Target Urban Area Property Tax Exemption. It allows, at its discretion, any city in the state to offer a 10-year property tax exemption program for unused or underutilized lands where new manufacturers or industrial firms are coming in and hiring at least 25 new people at family wages that have to average $23 an hour. So a tool in the toolbox, if you will. In any session you go into, there's always the things you work on proactively, and inevitably, there's going to be things you work on reactively. We ended up spending a whole lot of time on a couple of those. I've mentioned the Blake decision, and I want to thank our folks in legal and police for reviewing a lot of versions of bills late in the session on how the legislature was looking at implementing a new take on the Blake decision, ended up being Senate Bill 5476. And then a bill number I don't think I'll forget for many years, House Bill 1220, went through all kinds of iterations, many of them extremely worrisome to us. It was a bill that, on its face, was about planning for emergency housing, emergency shelters, and permanent supportive housing. But as some of you know, it had two sections, Sections 3 and 4, that were very preemptive of local authority and basically required that emergency housing and emergency shelters would have had to be accommodated in virtually all zones and basically taken your decision-making authority away. So we weren't very popular with all legislators for quite some time, and nor was the Association of Washington Cities or other cities like Auburn. But there were a number of cities that banded together and said, you know, "We cannot live with House Bill 1220," as it passed through earlier versions. The end version of the bill, we think we can live with. It says that you do need to accommodate emergency housing and emergency shelters in a majority of your zones that are within a one-mile proximity to transit. Checking with our folks in CED, I think they're pretty confident that they can work with that as they go from the interim zoning regulations you're quite familiar with to permanent ones. So looking ahead, what is left for us to do coming out of the session? There's a big question mark around transportation and what the legislature is going to do with new revenue. And remember, I mentioned earlier that there were some carbon reduction bills passed. Two of them in particular, one setting up a new cap and trade process and one setting up a low-carbon fuel standard, had been structured by the legislature so that they couldn't go into full effect and be have compliance regulations unless and until the legislature enacted a new gas tax package. The governor last week vetoed those provisions, even though they were just in subsections of bills. I think there's a high likelihood that the leadership in the state senate and the state house is going to file a legal challenge to what the governor did. But it does throw a bit of a wrench into some early discussions around a potential special session on transportation. We'll see what happens. Again, we thought we were very well positioned with key rent projects and programs, so we hope that there's still a possibility there. You know, I've gone into implementation mode with many of our department heads and directors on a lot of funding opportunities and tools and grant opportunities within the capital budget. So we feel we can take advantage of several of those. As I do virtually every year, I'll be putting together a comprehensive report on the session that'll be a particularly useful tool for our departments in knowing what to expect. This is also a key year on another front. You all, of course, remember all the work you put into the census and great work by people like Creedy and Vinita Horn. And the census results obviously yield a redistricting process where all 147 legislators will see their district boundaries adjusted somewhat, and all of the congressional district boundaries get reevaluated. So we have some particular thoughts on that and maybe having Renton in a few less legislative districts than exist today. So that'll be going on. I mentioned on the federal side, we have to come up with a game plan on American Rescue Plan Act. We're also pursuing federal funding with several in our congressional delegation as they roll out new programs for what they call congressionally-directed spending and transportation and infrastructure member projects. So we're working with the likes of Senator Murray, Congressman Smith, and others. A lot of ideas on grants that I want to make sure I'm communicating with our folks on. We've talked to you about the 1590, 1/10th of 1 cent sales tax money. Kristi Rowland is currently doing a great job helping coordinate that team. And we have, obviously, a to-do effort to bring something back to you. I mentioned ARPA. And then regionally, one of the big things we're working on is a very major update to the metro service guidelines that's going to be submitted to the county council in July. And Councilmember McIrvin is our key link on that one due to his place on the Regional Transit Committee. I just want to say, you know, before shutting up and yielding for whatever questions you have, I want to say some thank yous here. My gosh, the mayor, I don't know how many times we wound him up and had him involved in testifying on behalf of the city. He was terrific about doing it each and every time. So many of you on the council, really all of you, whether you were in meetings, whether you were testifying. I know Councilmember Corman, you testified in front of Transportation the one day. My gosh, Councilmembers Perez and Prince, in particular, on the House Bill 1220 legislation, all of you just played a really helpful role, and I thank you for that. And our state legislators, I mentioned, we have a lot of legislative districts we're in in some way. And they really, all of them, provide us access and an open door. And I can think of ways that virtually all of them try to help us and further the Renton cause. So those are all the districts we work with on a very regular basis. And then staff, I listed just a few here, but I mentioned Ed and Creedy, the chief on all of the policing reform bills. Public Works, a lot of review of transportation items and helping us fill out forms, community services and parks on many forms that they had to fill out legal and so many others. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have. I only did a quick skim of the policing reform bills, so I can talk more about those if you like. But I'm also happy to take any questions first.
Well, Doug, I'd like to start out, especially with that thank you page up there, and say that the most important thank you of all is to you, Doug, for all your work organizing all of this. You always do a great job for us. This was a really unusual year, so a complicated process became even way more complicated. And you were all over it, and we're all very grateful. All these other parties could not have helped so much had you not been there kind of guiding us. So thank you for that. Also, thank you for the thorough review. And with that, I'd like to ask council if you have any questions.
I don't see any hands up. Probably means, Doug, you did a really good job presenting. Oh, I do see one now, Councilmember McIrvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I was just going to echo. You took the words right out of my mouth as far as the, oops, try to re-raise it. Doug, great job, as always. Not surprised. The results always speak for themselves. So thank you for leading the way on a challenging session. The only question I have is the, we've often done a follow-up, I know, with legislators to say thank you. And I know that may be difficult this year in person, as we've done in the years past. Is there anything we're looking at to do as far as a chance? Because I know we didn't get the opportunity as a council to really kind of go down there for the day we usually do. So what do we have planned for the interim coming up?
Yeah, we've talked about that a bit. I think we'd love to do something in a, you know, a non-virtual, real human-being, person-to-person setting. So it's something we want to talk about. You're absolutely right, Councilmember McIrvin. We try and make a habit of saying please on the front end and thank you on the back with our members. And we've often teamed up, obviously, with the school district and Valley Medical and the chamber as well. So I think we have interest in doing something. We'd love to have a better handle on when full reopening really is going to occur. But I'll make sure that we're tossing that one around and bringing some ideas back to you all.
Thanks. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, thank you very much, Doug. I really appreciate all the follow-up and your representation of us. I have a question on this potential special session. What's the window for that? I mean, is there, is it even a feasibility at this point?
You know, a guy could go broke trying to predict when the legislature goes into special session. So with that caveat, I think some of the dates that are being talked about the most are September and November timeframes, Councilmember O'Halloran. While both the House and Senate went some distance in looking at new transportation revenue, I think we have to acknowledge they had different takes on it. The Senate put out more of a revenue package, and they had a number of different fees. The House was much more focused on a large increase in the gas tax and carbon-related revenues and calling it good. So those are different ways of looking at the same thing. The projects, I think they had slightly different lists. Whether carbon money should be spent exclusively on things like multimodal transportation and electrification or whether it could be spent on things like culverts, again, a difference between the House and Senate. So some things for them to work out that take time. And again, there's been talk about both September and November. take time. And again, there's been talk about both September and November. I think there's also a distinct possibility that they decide they don't get there, and that this gets punted into 2022. And if that happens, my fear is that the legislature very rarely wants to do big revenue packages in an even numbered election year, so maybe 2022 slides into 2023. So we have to see. But again, my two-word answer would be September and November would be the most likely times if it were to happen.
Thank you.
Well, I'll say again, Doug, I think that means you did a great job presenting. You also did a great job keeping us up to date during the session. So I don't think any of this is a surprise. It's a great summary. But you did such a good job keeping us up to date. I think it's familiar. So I'm just about, yeah, certainly. I'm just about to wrap up the meeting. Any final comments from anyone? Okay, all right. Well, with that, I'll adjourn the committee of the whole, and we'll reconvene in about 30 minutes at the regular council meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.